Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our special city council meeting of November the 20th, 2025 is now 7:04 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you please do the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson is absent. Mayor Protem Rocha is absent. Mayor Bernal?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at 7:05 PM with councilmembers Wilson and Mayor Protem Rocha are absent.
All right. Thank you. We all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we had a closed session tonight or this afternoon into this evening. Mr. City Attorney, could you please report out?
Yes. Mayor, council, this afternoon into this evening, the city council met in closed session to discuss four items. The first was a public employment for the recruitment of the permanent city attorney. An interview was provided, but no reportable other action was taken. Next was a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. This is the Trent Allen versus the City of Antioch case. Report was provided. No other reportable action was taken. Public employee person performance evaluation of the city manager. The evaluation was conducted. No other reportable action was taken. And then finally, the last item was a conference with real property negotiators. This was in regard to what we know as the Lynn House located at 809 West First Street here in downtown. The parties that negotiated were the city manager and myself with the other party was represented by Jose Cordone. No reportable action was taken.
All right. Thank you for your report out. It's now time for public comments. Mr. City Clerk, will you please read the speaker rules?
Thank you. Welcome to a meeting of the Antioch City Council. Your attendance is appreciated. The State Ralph M. Brown Act guarantees the public's right to address the city council within the framework of speaker rules. Because agendas encompass many business items, speaker rules enable the meeting to be efficiently conducted and concluded at a reasonable hour. The city council can only take action on items that are listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda, the public comments section of the agenda is for you. Unagendized comments are provided until no later than 7:30 PM when the city council moves on to the agenda items. There is another opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak either during public comments or during an agenda item, please fill out a speaker request form located at the entrance of the council chambers. Please place the speaker request form in the tray near the city clerk before the council meeting begins. This will enable us to call upon you to speak. It's important, the speaker request form is retained as a public record and as such may be shared with others upon request in line with California Public Records Act. On your speaker request form, please identify if the comment is for an announcement of community events, public comment, or a specific agenda item. No one may speak more than once on an agenda item or during public comments. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. When you are called to speak, please limit your comments to the time allotted, up to three minutes at the discretion of the mayor. The consent calendar is a group of items which are determined to be routine. These items are usually considered all at once and approved without further discussion. If you are opposed to action which is recommended for an item on the consent calendar, please submit a speaker request form before the meeting and place it in the speaker card tray near the city clerk. This will enable the item to be removed from the consent calendar and call upon you to speak. If the meeting appears to be going late, the city council may decide to continue some items until a subsequent meeting. The city council will try to make this determination around 10:45 PM. It is the goal to stop discussing agenda items by not later than 11 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Thank you. How many speaker cards do we have?
We have two speaker cards for public comments.
All right. Thank you.
Cindy, followed by Jeanette.
Well, good evening, Ron Bernal and beautiful people. My name is Cindy Moskowitz Harrington, and I live at 307 West Third Street. I'm here to ask why. This has to do with the water company. And I know there's so many more important things, but this is really important to me. They keep changing the day of when the bill is due, and I keep getting late charges. I'm one day late, and I keep getting $5, which adds up to a lot. They said that I needed to talk to the city council to see if it could be changed. Could we not have one specific date that we have to have our water bill, you know, payments in? That way, there wouldn't be a late charge because last month, it was the 21st. This month, it's the 19th. Who knows next month? I'm not very good at looking at my bill. I do look at the price and how much I have to pay, and I do pay my bill on time when it's on the time I'm supposed to. But every time, like today, I had another late charge. And I just wanted to know if there was any specific way we could just make it one date. And that way, we would, because where does all the late charges go? Who gets all those late charges? It's not sewer or, you know, this water, whatever. But where do the late charges go? Because I'm sure I am not the only one that has a late charge. It's really important that we be, you know, just be real and make one date, and that way, a lot of us wouldn't get late charges. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeanette, followed by Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Bernal and council members. I'm Jeanette Kennedy. I'm the Executive Director of Development and External Relations with Loaves and Fishes of Contra Costa. Loaves and Fishes has been serving Contra Costa County for more than 40 years, including right here in Antioch. Today, our county is facing unprecedented levels of food insecurity, and we are only, and we are doing everything we can to meet that need. Right now, we're currently serving 3,000 meals a day, and the demand continues to rise. For the last 25 years, we've actually been in the one building in Pittsburgh, our central kitchen, and it has served us well. But we have grown out of that space. And that's why we're super excited that we have taken over a property here in Antioch. It's located at 4080 Street, and that will be our new central kitchen. This project is a major investment, not just in food security, but in the community's long-term resilience. Once completed, this new Antioch central kitchen will allow us to triple our production. So that goes from 3,000 meals to 9,000 meals. And we're serving families, seniors, veterans, and working residents throughout the county. It will also house our culinary arts training program to support local workforce development, and will create space for a mobile resource hub. Provides food, healthcare access, housing navigation, showers, and that's all right here in Antioch. We have started the groundwork by meeting with several of you, and we've also have an invitation out to you, Ms. Scott. And so, we've also met with the building department. And what we understand from our meeting with Craig Andrews, and he has expressed full support, is that in order to get any of the city permits waived, we would have to have full approval and formal approval by this council. So tonight, I'm respectfully requesting that the council agendize a discussion item, hopefully in January, regarding the waiver of all city permits for this project. Specifically, the demolition permit, which is estimated at approximately $2,263, and the commercial tenant improvement permit estimated at approximately $52,970. While these individual fees may seem routine, waiving them would make a meaningful difference in ensuring that every dollar we raise goes directly towards serving the most vulnerable residents in our community. We believe this partnership is an opportunity for the City of Antioch to play a significant role in expanding food access, strengthening our regional food system, and supporting long-term community well-being. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Kelly Case?
Good evening, Mayor Bernal and council members. My name is Kelly Case, and I'm a social work supervisor with Contra Costa County Children and Family Services. I served this community for many years, and I've had the joy of volunteering for Royal Family Kids Camp for about a decade. Mayor Bernal, you and I have had worked together in that space for quite some time, and I've always appreciated your heart for the foster youth in this community. I'm here tonight because I would love to open a conversation between CFS and the City of Antioch about ways that we can partner more intentionally about the Families First Prevention Services Act. FFPSA focuses on prevention, keeping families together safely whenever possible, and strengthening community-based supports so fewer children enter foster care. Those goals line up beautifully with the direction this council has expressed for the city. There are opportunities for collaboration around early family supports, community education, youth services, and strengthening the networks that help families before a crisis happens. We would be grateful for the chance to work with the city to explore what this could look like here in Antioch. Along with prevention work, there's another piece tied to this that matters deeply for child safety. CFS and the Antioch Police Department, which I'm excited to see is here tonight, often respond to the same families during moments of crisis. And our ability to work together smoothly is a major factor in keeping children safe. Right now, there are some challenges in communication and coordination, making it harder for both our agencies to do our best work. Other East County law enforcement agencies have been joining us regularly for collaboration meetings, and those conversations have been increasingly productive. We would love to have APD involved in that same way so we can build a stronger, shared understanding of each other's roles and legal requirements. I reached out through the city website and by phone to request a meeting with you, Mayor Bernal, and I imagine those messages just haven't made it through. I completely understand how busy things are. I thought coming here tonight might be the best way to get this conversation started. Mayor Bernal, if you're open for it, I would really appreciate the chance to meet with you as well as my manager. I know how much you care about the kids of this city. I truly believe that together, we could strengthen prevention efforts, support families more effectively, and improve how our agencies collaborate to protect children. Thank you so much for your time and all you do for this community.
Thank you. Jose?
Good evening. Good evening. How you doing? Hope you're doing well. My name's Jose Cordón. How you doing? I would have been here a little earlier. I had seen my name on the agenda. I was a little excited for it, you know. It's pretty cool. I did not know we could make public comments on those closed session items. But before I get there, though, I want to touch on a couple of things that were said earlier. Youth services. I had came in a little, a few months ago, and mentioned about the Youth Arts Connection Program that we have with the libraries. They're going great. They're going absolutely great. We're in about our third month now. We average about 15 to 25 kids every single Tuesday and every single Thursday. Right? We're constantly getting in new kids. It's a great resource for anybody that's interested in learning more. Please let us know. Again, whether Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're partnering now with the library to have a special event for the kids on December 6th, where any student who comes in to shares, that shares a piece of poetry, will be entered into a raffle for an opportunity to win $100. That's Benjamin right there. I bet you they'll like that, especially as Christmas comes around, right? If everything goes well, we will be offering that opportunity every month. I also heard somebody mention food access. I had came in here and I talked about a garden, right? Well, that's going along smoothly. Right now, our next step is going to be to get some donations. And once we pick that place up, once we renovate some of the beds, we would love to have a blessing ceremony, and we would love the city to come through if they have time, right? It's a nice piece of, a nice piece of land that we're very excited to work. And then finally, I know no action was taken on the Lynn House, but I did want to extend my gratitude for that consideration. Hopefully, some action will be taken in the future. And I wanted to say thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Councilmember Friedas, Torres Walker, and Mayor Bernal. And I will say thank you to our other council members, but I'll tell them later. Thank y'all. Muchas gracias.
We have no further comment cards?
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on now to item number one, proclamations. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is in honor of Bob Franchetto, Antioch Lifetime Veteran of the Year 2025-2026. So first of all, Bob, congratulations. I am going to read this proclamation, and then you can come up and say a few words, and then after I read this, if you want to. And then after I read the second one, we'll come down and take some pictures with you. All right? All right. Get this straightened around. So this is in honor of Bob Franchetto, Antioch Lifetime Veteran of the Year 2025-2026. Whereas Bob Franchetto was born on June 23rd, 1938. Now, everybody knows how old you are, so. In Fort Dodge, Iowa, and relocated with his family to the City of Antioch in 1947. He attended Antioch High School, where he contributed to the Panther newspaper before graduating in the spring of 1956. Whereas in 1961, Bob Franchetto enlisted in the United States Army as a 717 clerk with crypto clearance and was stationed at Fort Baker Sausalito, where he served for three years. Whereas after completing his service in 1964, he returned home to Antioch with his beloved wife, Mary, who's sitting next to him tonight, whom he met while serving in the Army. Together, they continued the legacy of his family business, Cottage Florist, established in 1947 and purchased by Bob in 1959, carrying forward the family tradition that had been maintained by his parents during his time in the military. Whereas for decades, Bob and Mary's commitment to family and community has been evident in all they have done. Married for 61 years, they raised three children, Bob, Tony, and Paula, each caring for the spirit of service and family pride. Their daughter Paula has continued the family's legacy, owning and operating Paula's family florist, formerly known as Cottage Florist, preserving the Franchetto name as a cherished part of Antioch's history. Whereas Bob's lifetime of giving back to Antioch exemplifies the true spirit of this award. His enduring dedication, quiet leadership, and steadfast love for his community remind us all that service does not end when the uniform comes off. It simply takes on a new meaning. Whereas for his lifetime of service to his community and country, the Delta Veterans Group in the City of Antioch proudly recognized U.S. Army veteran Bob Franchetto as the Antioch Lifetime Veteran of the Year for 2025-2026. Now, therefore, I, Ron Bernal, Mayor of the City of Antioch, do hereby salute, commend, and honor Bob Franchetto for his dedication, commitment, and positive influence to our community and the veterans of the City of Antioch. Congratulations. Did you want to say a few words, Bob?
Mr. Mayor, council people, city people, it's been years since I used to come here all the time. We had a lot to do in Antioch. I was really involved with downtown Antioch. And being president of the association, I represented it of all the folks who had businesses downtown. Bill Tornheim, Leo Fontana, on and on and on. It's been a great pleasure to do it. But the pleasure that you are bestowing on Mary and I at this time, you can't explain it. But I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our second proclamation is in honor of Ricky Diaz, Antioch Veteran of the Year 2025-2026. It says, whereas Ricky Diaz was born on September 29th, 1961 in East Contra Costa County, whereas in 1979, Ricky enlisted in the United States Army, where he served with the 1st Battalion, 37th Field Artillery at the Fort Richardson Duty Station in Anchorage, Alaska until 1982. Ricky continued to live and work in Alaska for four more years before returning to his hometown of Antioch. Whereas Ricky has given countless volunteer hours to local organizations, including the Antioch Antioch VFW, the Antioch Historical Society, and the Antioch Bedford Center, quietly making a difference without ever seeking recognition. His humility, commitment, and heart for service truly reflect the values of our veteran community. Whereas Ricky met his wife, Jerry, in 2007, and the two were married in 2013 at the Antioch Historical Society Museum, a fitting place for a man whose life and service are woven into the very history of our city. Whereas U.S. Army veteran Ricky Diaz has proudly honored, has been proudly honored as the Antioch Veteran of the Year 2025-2026, a man who continues to serve his community with honor, humility, and heart. Now therefore, I, Ron Bernal, mayor of the city of Antioch, do hereby salute, commend, and honor Ricky Diaz for his dedication, commitment, and positive influence to our community and the veterans in the city of Antioch. Ricky Diaz.
I want to say thank you. I'm very honored. I want to say, sure, I help out and do things for the community, but it's people like JR, Ernie here, keep me busy at the VFW, JR, you know, these guys with Arnhem. And I want to give a special thanks to Jim Botchio. Because, you know, one day I woke up and he says, hey, what are you doing today? I go, I don't know, Jim. He goes, we're gonna go to the museum. We're gonna build a museum. We're gonna do a Sports Hall of Fame and all this stuff. And he takes me down there, and there's a bunch of stuff. Big old motors down there with the Sports Hall of Fame. And I'm thinking, this guy's crazy. And he got me involved, and he did it. Not just him, there's, you know, Elizabeth and Laura and Dave Branks, a bunch of them got together, but people like that got me involved, and I was able to help them and accomplish these things with the city of Antioch. So these guys that motivate me, these guys right here. Sometimes I want to pick up my phone. I love them, and I thank them for, you know, I just wanted to help, and I'm going to continue to help, and and they'll still be busy. And I thank them, and I thank Jim Botchio especially in my life. Okay?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to come down and take a picture with you right now. Sorry. Do I have a motion to approve?
And JR wants this.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamations?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes.
Vote passes three zero with Councilmember Wilson absent and Mayor Protem Rocha absent.
I just wanted to say, when when Jim Botchio approached me to go down, it cost the city, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, yeah, he was driven. I think so. All right. That's good. All right, here we are. Three, two, and one. Thank you so much.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comments.
All right. Moving on to item number two, announcements of civic and community events. First one's Holiday Delights Celebration.
All right. It's a tough act to follow. Like, you thank everyone for their service. Those guys are great. Just work with them on the parade. So we have here Saturday, December 6th, weather permitting for the parade. Weather permitting. If it rains, we will just light the tree another day. But we're having our Holiday Delights Annual Lighted Parade in Tree Lighting, featuring the Holiday Sippin Shop Artist in Fair, done by Celebrate Antioch, and that's going to be on West Second Street and G Street from 12 to 5:00. And you can sign up to be a vendor at Celebrate Antioch. And following that, right at 5:00 o'clock, we're going to do the parade. So we're currently at 24 people registered to be in the parade. It's going to be great. I've tasked my team to put a float in versus me just driving the truck. So I think we're going to win it. It may be rigged. I'm just saying, come out. We're stepping it up. We're putting in the float. So it's going to be a good time, and as soon as we get done with the parade, the school district always participates, so we'll have the bands from both high schools performing. We'll have Santa. We'll have Hot Chocolate Arts and Crafts, and we also have presents for the little ones, first come, first served. So hopefully, I've been good on weather this whole year. We'll get some good weather, and we'll have this event. So if you need more information or you would like to register for the parade, you can go to antiochca.gov backslash Holiday Delights. Thank you very much. And thanks, everybody that came out to the ribbon cutting ceremony. It was a great event. Thanks to all the electics and all the people, so.
Thank you, Director Wright, and I'd like that nice looking jacket on you. That's, looks warm, so. Awesome. All right. Moving on to announcements of board and commissions openings.
Thank you. Oh, we do have one more speaker card. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Debbie.
This is under announcements of civic and community events?
Yes. Hello, Mayor, Council, and staff. Debbie Blaser, President of the DAA. Two things. I want to thank everybody that came out for the cleanup day, especially APD, who helped organize that. We had over thirty, about thirty-five peoples join. Second and G looked much better after it. We'll continue with the beautification and the cleanup schedules with city departments and the businesses. So this is, this is one of many events that we will have for the beautification of downtown. Secondly, on Small Business Saturday, November 29th, that is a national small business day. So we had a group of the DAA leaders put together a bingo, and twenty-five businesses will be participating. So it's a bingo bingo card, and we're asking the residents and everybody to come out, have some fun with the bingos. They'll get prizes for it, raffles, and go back to each business to claim a prize. So watch for the announcements. It's all been finalized today, and I send twenty-five businesses are going to join us, which kind of warms my heart that they want to bring people downtown and increase the foot traffic. So thank you very much for both of those.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment on that item?
No further public comments.
All right. Moving on to item number three, announcements of board and commission openings.
Thank you. City of Antioch has the following positions open. The Board of Administrative Appeals has two full-term vacancies, which expire March 2028, and one alternate vacancy expiring December 2025. Parks and Recreation Commission has one partial-term vacancy expiring March of 2028, and one alternate vacancy expiring April 2026. And the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee has one partial-term vacancy expiring March 2026. The deadline to apply for these positions is Friday, November 21st, 2025. And then the Contra Costa County Library Commission has one full-term vacancy expiring June of 2029. The deadline for that to apply is Friday, November 21st. I'm sorry. The Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee deadline is Friday, December 12th. To be considered for these positions, please request an application by emailing the city clerk's office. Printed applications are also available at City Hall, right outside that door. Please email the completed application to the city clerk by the deadline date, and you can also drop off the applications in the water billing drop-off box just outside City Hall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on on that item?
No public comments.
All right. Continuing on to city council committee reports and communications. Councilmember Frieda.
None to report.
All right. Councilmember Torres Walker is not here. I attended an Inspector General Training Conference last week. It was related to some of our police oversight work that we're doing in the city of Antioch with our police department. Our chief was in attendance, our monitor, our city manager, and it gave me some some information about the importance of independent oversight and and how that is is being eroded right now, and and how important it is to maintain the integrity of it and the and the fact that there's a need to make sure that we're keeping our government and our and our businesses accountable. So that was a, that was an excellent conference. Also, was at the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, CCTA Board Meeting last night. We also had a CCTA workshop today where we're discussing the 2050 Blueprint and the countywide transportation plan, which is going to provide information towards a potential reauthorization of Measure J funding, which expires in 2034. So so that's a, that's a, looking at ways that we can provide projects related a lot towards transit programming, having one of the longest commutes out here in East Contra Costa County and the whole country, specifically just finding improvements that will will help alleviate the 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 level of congestion that folks experience, but also finding ways of helping people get out of their cars and get into other forms of transit that can reduce the amount of amount of trips that we're making. So that's, that's, that's going good. Councilmember Torres Walker, did you have any committee report, report outs?
The city school standing committee, we had a meeting to continue to discuss our community engagement efforts. We have another meeting scheduled for, I believe it's December 15th, to start to plan out our actual, like, town halls and focus groups for 2026.
All right. Thank you. And just under, under Mayor's comments, I just wanted to just let our our city staff know what an excellent job was done this last Saturday at the ribbon cutting for the Contra Loma Estates Park. Our our Director Wright and Director Bunting and Carlos Cepeda were out there, and they were instrumental in getting that project and that park across the finish line. It's been in the works for, I had forgotten, twelve years, they said, since it had been started. And it was, it was a state grant that we received to construct it. It's a beautiful facility. It has a restroom. It has a walking path around it. It has Antioch's biggest dog park. It's on Mahogany in the Sycamore neighborhood, and it's, it's one of our nicest parks in the community. And so it was just great to have, have the community come out to celebrate that. It's in District One, and Councilmember Torres Walker's district, and it's just a great amenity to that neighborhood. And so just super excited to be a part of that. And there's just a lot more that we're doing as a city, trying to continue to make improvements and and create spaces for families to to come and enjoy and and just relax, get away from the, get away from the crazy. So that was, that was a wonderful, wonderful event. I also attended a ribbon cutting for Commercial Kitchen over at Lighthouse Ministries on Sixth and F Street, I think it is. It's the oldest church in Antioch. It goes back to the 1860s. And so they've been serving folks in need and the homeless for years. And so they, they just completed a commercial kitchen. They said it costs about a hundred thousand dollars, and it started with ten thousand dollars in seed money, and they thought that's how much it was going to cost until they went to get a permit, and that just paid for the permit. So there they went. And but so they opened it. It serves about thirty to forty people on a Saturday, and so that's another part of our community that's making a difference and really doing some good work. They also work with individuals that have are recovering from substance abuse. They live next door, and they they learn construction trade. And so just another example of folks helping our needy in our community and seeing them elevate up to places where they can become productive members of society and and also just serve. And and so that was, that was really encouraging. Beautiful, beautiful event there as well. Moving on, consent calendar, item number four. Does city council want to pull any items or the public? None from the council? Does the public have any items?
No items pulled.
Okay. So we have no, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes three zero with Councilmember Wilson absent and Mayor Protem Rocha absent.
All right. Moving on to item number five, public hearing. This is a public hearing for an ordinance to amend Section 4-5.1204 and Section 4-5.1222 of Title IV of the Antioch Municipal Code relating to parking on city property and municipal parking lots. Can we please have a staff report on that?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll take the initial cut at this, and then our department may wish to chime in. This is an ordinance that is meant to provide some leeway to our city to basically put some time restrictions on the use of parking lots, especially here in downtown. This would allow us to limit parking from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so overnight hours or non-business hours, but also for business hours as well, if there is a need. And this sets a process, requires signage, and allows us to basically enforce through ticketing and, if necessary, towing. So really, that's, that's the intent. Staff can provide you maybe a better sense of how, they, this was their request, they came to our office, we drafted it. I do need to put into the record, if there's a motion tonight to introduce this, there is, on the third line of paragraph B of Section 4-5.1204, there's a phrase that says that we can change hours, and the phrase picks up, or such other non-business hour range, the "non" should be gone. It should be, or, or such other business hour range as may be reasonably necessary. Because again, the point is that there may be some business hours, you know, let's say 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. or something like that, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., where we want to reserve that authority. And then the word "non," "non-business hours" also appears in Section 4-5- in Section 4-5.1222. So, that would also be something that we will pull out. So, just pull out those two words. That was just simply a drafting issue. I just, as a, kind of open up the hood, when I draft these things, I look at these so many times that at some point my eyes kind of glaze over. But I am very thankful that our staff, when they did their final read-through today, as they were preparing, they caught this error. I do apologize. But that would be my report. I'm happy to answer any legal questions or drafting questions, but I think our staff could, Mr. Bunting can come up and kind of explain to you how this would work in the field.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this is in an attempt to try to maintain some order within our parking lots here in the downtown area. We've tried to close them, to keep the parking lots closed overnight. The cost of doing that becomes expensive. We're playing overtime for people to open and close these gates, to people to keep unwanted people out of these areas overnight, since they shouldn't be camping in these areas. This is an attempt for us to be able to have these restrictions and permit parking in areas where there might be residents or businesses that are in the area that should be allowed to park overnight, but others that should not be there would not be allowed to be there. And we can enforce the parking to allow those vehicles to get removed. In addition, it would allow the city engineer, after conducting conversations with businesses, residents, to impose restrictions during business hours that were needed to try to, again, maintain some order and allow us to enforce parking regulations within these areas without having to always open and close gates, utilizing the police department, having them come by and enforce these regulations.
All right, thank you. Did you want to ask a question? Yeah, so this is a public hearing. Will you please read the rules for the speakers for the public hearing? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. During public hearings, each side is entitled to one main presenter who may not speak for more than 10 minutes. All other speakers during public hearing items are entitled to a maximum of five minutes. These time limits may be modified depending on the number of speakers or number of items on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Groups who are here regarding an item may identify themselves by raising their hands at the appropriate time to show support for one of their speakers. During certain types of hearings, the applicant is allowed to give their presentation first. After all testimony is received, the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal. After having heard from the public, the agenda item will be closed. Deliberations will then be limited to members of the city council.
All right, thank you. We're open the public hearing. We had the city speaking in favor of the item. Do we have anybody speaking in opposition to this item? Seeing nobody, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
All right. Public hearing's closed.
I do have questions for staff. While I think that this is a step in the right direction, the question for me is enforcement. It doesn't do us any good to put signs up if nobody's going to enforce it. So, how is that going to be coordinated?
We've worked with the police department. They're aware of this, as well as some downtown security. I think it might be best, maybe I could offer, maybe Captain Bittner would be able to come up here and provide a little bit more information of how the police would be handling this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. To answer your question, Mr. Freitas, it really depends on the situation. We will have some proactive enforcement. Majority of the enforcement will probably be complaint-driven. We do have a security guard that's contracted with the city. So, if he notices some issues, he can relay it to the police, and we can enforce it there. The beat officer, the officers that work the downtown area could also enforce it. And like I said, it's been mostly probably complaint-driven, if we get complaints from the citizens, from city staff.
So, when this process is done or initiated, I'm assuming Public Works and the Police Department work in collaboration on this?
Absolutely.
Where does that thing should be?
And we have been working in collaboration for the past several years, trying to find solutions by incorporating a security guard to assist us, by trying to gate the lots and also lock the gates during after-hours. So, we've tried different options, and they've failed with the exception of the Marina Lot, which has an automatic gate. So, we're hoping that posting these signs and the ordinance change will help us in getting a handle on the parking lots.
Okay. How many areas are we talking about, sites?
I believe there's four to five designated lots downtown.
Okay. I would just simply ask staff in maybe six months to come back and let us know, did it work? Did it not work? There are things here with, address any questions regarding restricted hours. Who on staff is going to be identified with that task? Because this could become kind of a controversial issue. If they're not identified now, I just simply suggest in the future that somebody be designated, particularly for the downtown people.
Sure, the way that it's recommended is the city engineer would be able to make that determination with discussions with the residents and other people, stakeholders within the area, to determine, again, complaint-driven, the reason why we would be doing this. And then, that's definitely typically when these are complaint-driven, the adjacent residents or commercial properties that are using these areas would like us to remedy the problem. So, enforcing something like this is typically a good thing. Residents and commercial people will be able to utilize their parking lot appropriately.
And I'm just suggesting, as outreach to the businesses and some of the property owners and residents, that you actually give them the information who to contact, so they're not calling City Hall saying, "Who do I call to complain?" They have that information, that resource.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I had, you know, we've been talking about parking enforcement overall across the city, and it's always been an issue to get cars towed and off the streets, but also to enforce like parking citations. And so, then we get this ordinance, and although it's focused on just like city-owned lots in the downtown, I also had the same concerns around enforcement and monitoring. And it also mentions a permit, permitting process, if people want to be able to park overnight. Did I see that in here?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, do we already know what the cost of the permits are? Is it a monthly cost? Is it a, can you purchase an annual permit? Do we know who will and won't be able to purchase a permit? Do we know what the fines and fees will be if you do park overnight without a permit? And then, let's just assume that the population we're talking about is the unhoused population with really no way to pay those potential fees and fines. Is there any like negative potential or consequence to that, to those folks?
I can speak to the enforcement part, as we'd been talking about, in terms of working with the police department, trying to enforce and have more presence in these areas. In terms of the fees for the permit and other such things, I'm going to need to do a little bit more research on that, and we'll be able to come back to you with those costs.
Because I'm also interested in like, is there a waiver for a permit, like if you're a business owner or a resident in the area? And so, right now, I'm assuming this is just, a lot of that is going to be incorporated to vote on potentially?
Well, the idea is to let the people park there that are, that should be parking there. There's residents and there's businesses that utilize these downtown parking lots for their business or their home. Those would be the people that would be permitted to work there or to be able to park there.
You'd park there between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. in the morning?
Possibly. There will be people that live in those areas that do have their cars parked in these lots. They would be allowed to park their car in those lots because they would be adjacent to the residents.
With a permit?
There would be permits, so we would know which cars belong there, which cars didn't.
And what is the permitting process and the fee for the permits?
I would have to do a little bit more about that. Right now, the idea is to try to get the concept of what we're doing, and then I'm sure we can work through the cost of permit and fines related to that.
I'm wondering, I mean, if we're gonna do this, why wouldn't we do it all in one swipe, including the permitting fees, fee waiver, all of that information? Is it that we would pass it tonight, and then y'all would piecemeal and bring some of that back to us to approve in pieces?
I would assume that that's something that we could discuss tonight, if that would be something that we would like to add to the ordinance, if there was the council wish to determine what these sort of costs or fees might be. That would be something we could discuss tonight.
So, the cost for the permit is really going to be minimal. It would be the price of the placard, basically. Right now, the placards are like $3 to $8, depending if they get the rearview hanger or the sticker on the bumper. It's not intended like a parking, like a fee yearly. You would get one permit issued if you show you have residents there, why you need to be there, a business owner or a resident, a tenant up on an apartment. That's the only fee associated, would be the cost of the placard.
So, the requirement would be for a permit to park between the hours when the parking lots are meant to be closed between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. In order for you to get a permit, it would be a minimal fee of like $3 to $9?
Yeah, the cost of the...
Like a one-time cost?
Exactly.
For the sticker, and you can use it unlimited. There's no renewal. There's nothing like that. And all you have to prove is that you are a resident of downtown or a business owner.
Right. That you have a reason to be there after-hours.
Or you have a reason to be there after-hours. So...
As far as the fine itself?
For instance, I'm a council member. I don't live downtown, but I'm down here after-hours. Would I be able to get a permit?
Well, I think if you have a...
And I'm just not saying that I will want one, but I'm just saying like, people could make, people could make the argument, like I might not own a business, but I work down here after-hours. I might not live down here, but I work down here. Like...
If you work down here, yeah, you have a reason to be here. You could get a permit.
You could get a permit, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if you have a legitimate reason to be down here. What we're trying to eliminate is the hanging out at the parking lots after-hours and creating the nuisance problems or the violence that happens. Like at the Marina Parking Lot, there's fights that go on there. They damage property. They race cars down there. We're just trying to eliminate, if you have a legitimate reason for being there, you would get a permit.
I just think that like, when most cities do parking permits and fees, it's often not a one-time cost, and it's often not the minimal, and it's often like renewable. And I think we should consider that.
Okay. And then, as far as the ticket, if they were to be towed, I think that's a standard fee in the vehicle code. I'm not sure what that would be.
You might qualify, because some of our meetings go to 1:00 in the morning.
Yes, they do.
I'm not saying anything.
I mean, because I'm just asking, because fees could add up. You constantly having to tell somebody to leave or move. Would it?
Absolutely. As far as the permit fees, as Mr. Bunting mentioned, and that's something that Public Works would have to work out with the city. But when it comes to citations, it'd be a citation for a municipal code violation. And the bail schedule, the fine schedule, Mr. Cole may have a better idea. We don't issue too many citations for municipal code violations. More than likely, if a vehicle's there between 10:00 and 6:00 and it's not permitted, more than likely, it's going to be towed. And the officers will do all they possibly can to make contact with, you know, the occupant and/or the owner to get it moved without towing it. But if you have a vehicle there that can't be removed, and the owner's nowhere around, and it's at midnight, it'll probably be towed.
Thank you. I think we should have a deeper discussion about the permit and what it would look like, and if there are any waivers or criteria, but also like not even a one-time minimal fee, maybe something renewable and things of that nature. Like you just don't get it, and you have it forever.
Yes, Councilmember Freitas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Torres Walker. I think that this is a little bit more involved, and we're looking at this as today, but hopefully in the foreseeable future, there will be more economic development. There'll be more traffic and things of that sort. The other problem is that, you know, if a person sells his or her car, you know, the sticker goes with it. So, there has to be a process, a new vehicle, new process, you know, to sign in. So, I do think we need to take a look at it, and I would suggest in six months, you know, or, I mean, we would like, I would like to hear, you know, or receive a report on the success, or if there are other things that we need to do.
I know you mentioned, you mean like a report back in its current form with none of the like build-out of the permit process?
No, everything.
None of that.
No, I mean, what, I mean, six months after you post, you know, when you actually put signage up, right? And that's, to me, that's the beginning of the clock. But all the other stuff can be folded in as well.
But I think what Councilmember Torres Walker is saying is that this permitting process hasn't been fully developed, and so, we can bring the whole ordinance back with the permitting process in place.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, because I think it's probably going to be more than just the cost of the placards, and be the time to administer it and all that. So, and then we also would, I think, need to update our fee schedule correct in order to incorporate it in. So, it's probably a little bit more.
Involved.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can say something real quick. The reason I believe this, the whole ordinance was even put on the table for a change is we've been getting a lot of complaints over the past two years from the business owners, from the residents, from city staff about that parking lot. And right now, our hands are tied. And so, if somebody decides to park in there after-hours, you know, 10:00 p.m. on, and they decide to camp in the parking lot, or they decide to, you know, just park and leave their vehicle there and continue to have it in there in the morning, there's nothing we can really do about it. And we try it all we can as far as the gates and using our security guards to assist us. And like I said, our hands are tied. So, if we continue to get complaints until this ordinance is passed, there's really not much we can do other than, you know, ask people to leave if we come across somewhere, get complaints.
Okay, understood.
I would rather that we have something like a lot more detailed, that we could pass in one swipe and have everything baked in, rather than, like, and it's very ambiguous at this point. Like, we don't even know what the permits would be, what things would look like. It's just a lot of unanswered questions. And I'm not saying it's not important to secure those parking lots, because if it wasn't, then the previous council wouldn't have voted for additional security downtown for those parking lots, as well as the city manager making it a priority to make sure that the gates have been closed. So, I think we've been showing that we're trying to take initiative to remedy the issue, but I think we do a disservice for the community when we pass the ordinance that isn't like clear and detailed to the point with fees and everything, which is why, so I'm not saying it's not important. I'm just saying we should have, we should have this a lot more flushed out so we can do it in one swoop. And then, have the evaluation that Councilmember Freitas wants to have. We will actually be evaluating against something, rather than coming back in six months and evaluating against nothing.
Yeah, totally understand. Thank you.
And I believe we used to have a placard program in the city years ago, so I think it's probably something that could be...
Yeah, we can revive it and bring this back to you with more considerations, details, the waivers, the fees, probably in January.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I know last, maybe it was last year, I'm not sure, before Kwame Reed left, we were talking about having like paid parking on the Marina and like these different ideas. But I think like, I'm happy to at least see this come back, and I'm looking forward to having the next round of reviews.
So, do we have a motion to table this until it's ready to come back again? I guess that, would that be the motion to, what to do with this, if we're not going to act on it tonight?
Yeah, just, yes, you would table this ordinance, although it sounds like...
We want it to come back again. We just want it to have more detail.
You want it to be part of a broader package.
Yes.
So, you've given direction to staff. I think you could just move on. There's no action that needs to be taken, because this ordinance will be not the only product that comes back to you. It'll be part of something else.
Okay, will it come back as a first reading again?
Yes, it will have to come back as a first reading, but the permit program and other things you want would be included in that ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number six on the council regular agenda, we have a resolution appropriating expenditures for encumbrances and project budgets outstanding to the 2025-26 fiscal year budget and approving other amendments to the 2025-26 fiscal year budget.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. Our Finance Director Merchant will be presenting the June 30th, 2025 closing numbers for the general fund and requests for budget rollovers and other amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Every fall, after we work on closing the books and we're nearing the end of our audit, we report out on the unaudited in-progress numbers for the fiscal year end. And we also ask for those projects that weren't completed, that were either committed via a purchase order, which we refer to as an encumbrance, or hadn't been encumbered yet but still pegged for a project and ask those, those expenditures to be re-appropriated, that is rebudgeted into the new fiscal year. So, since we've closed the 24-25 fiscal year end, we're asking for the encumbrances, which are commitments, purchase orders related to not-yet-completed contracts, purchases of goods or services to be rolled over. There's other certain projects that weren't committed via a purchase order that were not complete and thus require the remaining budget to be carried forward. That's on Exhibit B and the purchase orders are on Exhibit A, sorry, I left that out. And then there's other budget items that have come to fruition thus far in the fiscal year that we're requesting amendments for, and that's in Exhibit C. So, for 2024-25 unaudited closing numbers, we are currently undergoing this year's independent financial statement audit. There could be slight audit adjustments needed. However, at this point, we don't anticipate anything coming on. And so, let's get my staff report on the screen here, so. I don't know how to get this on here. Oh, we got it on the screen, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little bit technically challenged. So, I'll just put on, first to talk about the fact that revenues exceeded expenditures, which is considered a surplus, by $9,345,822 due to total revenues coming in slightly higher than projected and actual expenditures being under budget. The net, true net surplus for the fiscal year end is $3,883,367 calculated as follows. You can see in this table that's on the screen that the surplus is $9,345,822. Earlier with the adoption of the CIP budget in June, CIP bud, the resolution adopting that allowed the rollover and rebudget of CIP projects into the new year. So, as mentioned in the budget update that was brought to council in September, $1,826,144 was re-appropriated into fiscal year '26. So, that's part of that surplus, so it reduces that surplus because we rolled it into the new year. And then Exhibits A and B that are attached to the staff report are the encumbrances and projects that weren't completed by year end that were asking to be rolled over, sets a total of $3,325,71. So, when you strip those out of the number, the true surplus spending that wasn't pegged for other purposes is $3,883,367. Furthermore, $2,467,853 of the net surplus was set aside in the Budget Stabilization Fund at June 30th, leaving a general fund reserve balance of $49,825,498 and a balance in the Budget Stabilization Fund after moving the 2.4 million in there of $42,399,323. So, for revenues, they're $1,054,449,000 higher than projected. The main contributing factor to the net revenues higher than projected of 1.05 million is due to the city's required implementation of governmental accounting standard board, also known as GASB 96 Accounting Pronouncement for Subscription-Based Technology Agreements. Under this pronouncement, the city must recognize software subscriptions as a liability for the full amount to be paid over the term of the agreement. And we have to recognize what's called a financing proceeds of $847,264 with the corresponding offset in expenditures for software agreements. While this has a net zero impact to the general fund, the revenue appears higher by $847,000. It's not actual money coming in, it's just an accounting way we have to recognize this liability. So, as a result, the revenues are inflated with actual revenues exceeding budget by only $207,185. The increase was due to various net, some revenue streams were a little bit higher and some were a little bit lower. So, the net impact was $207,000. Fiscal year '25 expenditures were $10,445,898 less than projected. When you remove the impact of this GASB 96, taking out the $847,264, which is recognized in expenditures, actual expenditure, 10.5, excuse me, 10.4 million less than projected. The major contributing factors were $661,726 less in operating subsidy than projected to the animal shelter due to a combination of salary savings and contractual service savings, $437,861 less in operating subsidy than projected to recreation services due to a combination of salary savings and services and supplies under budget, and $2,946,282 in salary savings from all unfilled positions. $1,720,034 represents non-police salary savings, which is considered a one-time revenue per the city's one-time revenue policy. The City Council may want to consider allocating to one-time projects or unfunded liabilities per the city's one-time revenue policy resolution, but it is recommended to either maintain the general fund, the funds in general fund reserves or move them to the Budget Stabilization Fund to help address the budget challenges the city is facing. There was $737,266 in purchase orders on June 30th, 2025 that were not yet spent. The purchase for, the carryforward of the budgets for these is included in the budget amendments in Exhibit A attached to the report. So, that's part of the $10 million surplus, so it's actually committed funds. $2,587,805 in projects and purchase budgets outstanding as of June 30th, 2025 not yet entirely spent. The carryforward of these budgets is outlined in Exhibit B attached to Attachment A of the staff report. Again, this is a commitment of that $10 million reducing, reducing the surplus. $1,826,144 in CIP broad budgets that were unspent and already carried forward into fiscal year '26. That's for the police project that I previously mentioned. There was approximately $348,000 budget savings in outside legal costs in the city attorney's office. So, that's part of the surplus going back into the general fund reserves. Approximately $132,000 unspent in contractual marketing services in the Economic Development Division. $142,000 less in subsidy to the lighting and landscape districts than projected. $80,000 in contractual savings in the police department for potential crime prevention mutual aid assistance that was budgeted for. Approximately $148,000 in contractual savings in the Community Development Department and approximately $92,000 savings in budgeted utility costs. So, Exhibit C to Attachment A includes other budget amendments needed for the general fund and other funds in the city. The purposes of the amendments are outlined in that exhibit, but a few to highlight are, there was, were reducing general fund expenditures by $247,000 for liability insurance premiums. While the projected total insurance premium built into the budget did not vary significantly from the actual premium, the allocation among funds did change slightly as it is based on budgeted personnel expenses, thus resulting in the allocation being slightly less to the general fund. The other one that is a little bit harder to swallow is $1,021,585 reduction in sales tax revenue based on the latest projections from the city's sales tax consultant. It was previously reported to the council with the budget update on September 28th that projections were down approximately $235,000. However, with the latest quarterly data for June 30th, '25, the city's sales tax has declined 9.8% over the quarter ending June 30th, 2024. Almost all business segments have experienced decline in taxable sales and the opening of Costco in Brentwood contributed to this decline. There's $1,664,166 in salary savings that can be recognized thus far this fiscal year. This will be further evaluated as the next budget cycle begins to capture any additional salary savings. Fortunately, this helps offset the reduction in revenues. Another item, not for the general fund, but for the American Rescue Plan Fund, where the exhibit shows revenues of $3,85,330, representing the balance of ARPA funds remaining at June 30th. This is not new money coming in, we recognize revenue as we spend it. So, this is recognizing the revenue for the expenses that will occur. All funds must be spent by December 31st, 2026. And the expenditure budget for the projects to be carried forward in ARPA is in Exhibit B. So, that's the money pegged for projects already obligated by City Council and reported to the Department of Treasury. We have to carry those budgets forward. So, let me get the budget summary table on the screen here. So, we have the unaudited column for '24-25 and the '25-26 column, which takes into account all the items in Exhibit A, B, and C. You can see initially the revenue for '24-25, $102.5 million dropping down to $94.2 million. Part of this, as discussed during the budget study sessions, you can see the transfers in are approximately $10 million and it's dropping down to $4.8 million. There was an influx of close to $5 million from the American Rescue Plan Fund to pay for government services in '24-25 as well as the City Council authorizing return of funds set aside for capital projects. One for the EV transition project, if City Council recalls, that bumped up the transfers returning the money to general fund reserves to help face our budget challenges. So, the, that's why it drops down to the $4.8 million. And then in addition, our sales tax drop of the $1 million being accounted for in this number. Then for expenditures, as you can see, $93.47 million for actual expenditures in fiscal year '24-25, going up to the $110 million, $954,729. Part of this number bumping up to the $110 is the rollover, the encumbrances and projects totaling $5,151,215. So, really, the expenditures would be going up about $105 million. The exact nature of the increases were discussed during the budget study session. Some of the things I can highlight is that there, you know, is a million, million dollars budgeted for the general plan update. That's part of the increase. There's $400,000 set aside for a project home key match if we're approved for that, plus with the push to fill the vacant positions. So, as you can see at the bottom part of this table, the ending fund balance at June 30th, 2025 is $49,825,498. Unassigned fund balance is $43,585,133. The percentage of un, the unassigned fund balance percentage of revenue is 42.52%, well above the established reserve level of 20%. And then in fiscal year '25-26, an estimated ending fund balance of $38,167,551, unassigned amount of $37.3 million, still meeting well above the targeted reserve level of 39.64%. I have a reconciliation of the deficit on the next page. You can see in '25-26, the deficit is $11,657,947. I just want to hopefully give a better understanding. So, expenditures in excess of revenues in fiscal year '25-26 is actually $16,657,947. Council authorized with the adoption of the budget utilization of $5 million of the Budget Stabilization Fund. That leaves a balance remaining of $11,657,947. Then when you take into account the rollover of the budget, the reserves from prior year fiscal year '25, the $5.1 million, the deficit remaining when you back, take out the rollover is $6,506,700, $506,732. So, again, you can see another way to look at it. Right below that, there's a total deficit of $16.6 million. We're using $5 million in Budget Stabilization Revert, Budget Stabilization Funds. We're using reserves for the rollover of the $5.1 million. And then the remaining deficit, the $6.5 million, is covered by reserves. So, the deficit is zero when you use the general fund fund balance to balance the budget. General fund reserves in each fiscal year are in compliance with the city's reserve policy. And as mentioned previously, $2.467 million in surplus funds were transferred to the Budget Stabilization Fund at June 30th, 2025. So, with that, I'm open to any questions on any of the attachments or further questions on the report itself. I will say we're going to be kicking off the next budget cycle come January. We'll also provide a budget update on how fiscal year '25-26 is coming. And as a reminder, we will be adopting a one-year budget again for fiscal year '26-27. And I'll turn over to council for any questions.
All right, that was a lot, so thank you. Finance Director Merchant, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comments.
Okay, any questions or comments from council, Councilmember Freitas?
So, on page two of the staff report going at the bottom, FY 2025 expenditure, the $10,445,000. As I looked at each one of the bullets, the first one, $661,000, and part of it comes from salary savings. The next bullet, that $437,000 salary savings. The following bullets, $2.946 salary savings. So, it's been our practice that when we budget for positions, we budget for the whole year, correct?
We do, but if we have known vacancies, we will prorate with the new city manager coming on and a real push for, for hiring and we've, you know, with officers in the academy, for example, and people in background, we've tried to hold money to, for if those people come on board, plus hold money for any unexpected overtime, for example. And so, it does result in year end by that, that kind of happening. We're hoping for this fiscal year by already recognizing, as I said this evening, the 1.6 million in salary savings and further evaluating to scratch that down to really be more precise by year end with the adoption of the '27 budget because that will also amend the fiscal year '25-26 budget.
So, approximately, how many approved positions does the city of Antioch have?
For this fiscal.
Approximately.
For, for this fiscal year, there's 405 approved full-time positions.
And how many are filled right now, approximately?
Yeah, I believe there's approximately in the neighborhood of 70 vacancies citywide, not just, you know, that's all across all funds in the city.
I mean, the reason why I'm raising this is because this occurs every year. And so, and, you know, so in some respects, it is kind of a hidden budget reserve. And I think that in, in the next year's budget, considering some of the deficit that we have, I think we need to take a look at how we have done that. Yes, I understand the conservatism, but in reality, it doesn't give a true, actual picture of what is happening because if there's, if we deplete the reserves, if we deplete rate stabilization, there's still a lot of money in unfunded, excuse me, in funded vacant positions. And we see this every year. And so, the question for me, the policy question, is do we, you know, retain the 12 months or do we change it to six or nine months? Because it will have an impact on our numbers and particularly on the deficit. So, going on to page three, it's the, the first bullet down, $737,266 in purchase orders on June 30th that are not yet spent. So, let me just ask, have they all been contractually obligated?
Yes, for the purchase orders, a contract or an invoice has been submitted and we're waiting either for, for example, a delivery of a vehicle or the project wasn't completed, but we're still in contract with the vendor.
But we are going to spend it.
Yes, it's committed, yes.
I mean, part of the question is when you see something, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars, the question is, well, did you really need the, need the item? But if it's already contractual. Going down, this is probably the most sobering for the city council. Other budget amendments for fiscal year 2026, the second bullet. You know, we combined the community development and the economic development under one particular senior position. $1,021,585 reduction in sales tax revenue. This is a red flag screaming at us and we do not have a real plan. And I, you know, then when we go down further, we see in the same, same bullet. However, with the latest quarterly data for June 30th, 2025, the city's sales tax has declined 9.8%. A 10% reduction. I'm, I'm sure that a lying share of that is because Costco opened up in Brentwood and we lost some of that revenue. But this is an emergency screaming at us and we need sooner rather than later an economic development plan because. because we all know the major sources of revenue to a city are property taxes and sales tax. And when you see a $1 million reduction in sales tax revenue, and then compound that with a 9.8% drop, and we don't have any plan. We cannot operate that way. And so I, I, I think that in January, staff needs to come forward. And we need to have a very detailed discussion about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. It's just a red flag and we see it, and I think we need to forward. On the budget summary, when I was, when I'm going down, you know, on some of these items, I mean, police services as an example, the public, particularly last campaign, you know, said that public services, police services are number one priority. We're going from roughly $52 million to almost $61 million from one fiscal year to the next. And that's a 18%. And if you look at overall budgets, that police budget is approximately 68 to 70% of our total budget. And this, obviously, we're doing more expenditures with coming into compliance with the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice. And as I went down, you know, public safety is going from 1.8 to almost $3 million. Community development, the 5.7 to $9 million. I know that part of that, I have, I have to believe or correct me, is because we're, we have begun work on the general plan. And, and so then, the other thing that I have a question, when we go down to total expenditures, committed community development fees, we're going from 1,089,000 to 289,000.
Yeah, that's entirely to the general plan, because we collect a general plan maintenance fee. And so we have to kind of hold it in a pot. And since the budget for the general plan in fiscal year 2526 is 1 million, that's why there's a, and they don't expect to spend the whole 1 million, they were thinking probably eight, around 800,000. So that's the reason for the reduction.
So the 1.1, tho, those are fees that have been collected over extended period of time to actually do that?
Yes.
All right. And the other, let's see. So our true deficit on, on the page then is the 16 million? Is that correct?
Yes.
And so that is the challenge that the city council is going to face, correct?
Well, what you're really looking at would be the 16 million minus the 5,151,215, because that's the rollover. So, you know, it would be right around 11, the 11 million.
Okay. Then on Exhibit C, you know, we have the non-departmental from 20, fiscal year 26 budget, the amendment. I assume, you know, the, the, again, here is vacancy salary savings, salary savings, salary savings. And so can you just elaborate a little bit more on that? Is that, again, vacant positions that have not been filled?
Yes, so the non-departmental, that one is for the insurance, as I mentioned, liability insurance. And then for the, those other three departments, yes, that is vacancy savings for positions that have not, either they've been filled, but took longer to fill than expected, because there are some savings that the position got filled three months into the year, so that's recognized into that. And then positions that look like they're going to be coming on board, say, January, so.
Again, I'm, just underscore, I, I do think we need to come back and re-
No, absolutely, and that's why we wanted to at least get on that now, based on, myself and the city manager actually meet, you know, every couple of weeks with the Human Resources Director to go over the staffing matrix, get the status of hiring, what's in the pipeline, because we really want to get this number as accurate as possible as we move forward in the budget process.
And just a small matter, going down to the Animal Services Fund, the revenues, 106,800. And it says donation received, was that a, a single donation?
Yes.
Have we honored whoever's giving us that money?
That would be a question for the Police Department.
I mean, do we know, do we know who gave us 106,800? Anybody? If you don't know, you don't know.
That's, well, the division is under Captain Bitner. The division is under Captain Bitner, so I hope.
Mr. Freitas, I don't have the name offhand, but the chief and I did, and the Animal Services Manager, we did receive a check. I don't have the citizen's name, but we did a social media post on it, so we can pull that up and get that information for you if you'd like.
Is it Don Williamson's sister?
Yeah, it was, yes, it was a state, yeah.
Because I know she does, her will, you know, designated it. And I think, Mr. Mayor, and the camp, council, I think that, you know, we should at least send an appreciation, you know? She's been passed for a long time. And originally, it was around 34, 35,000 that went to pay for food and things of that sort. But when I saw this, I said, is it, as, wow, 106,800. I just, if you could confirm that, and I think we need to do something to say thank you, at least to her surviving, you know, relatives, so.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll take care of that, thank you.
All right, thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Torres Walker, no? Did you have any, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I actually did write some things down, just because we are going to have a review in January, sorry, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things I, I am curious about, and, you know, I know three months ahead, but I would like to know travel expenses for city council members, staff, boards, and commissioners. That's the total cla, total cost for individuals, and where did they go? The other is, of course, I, I think, Ms. Merchant will cover it anyway, but the overtime cost per department, it's a big ticket item in the last discussion. And I think that we really need to understand that. And the other one is a breakdown of all existing and future consultant services agreements, any other type of consultant agreements that we have. We, we need to have a review of that. The other, as we move forward, I think we need to take a, a look at the approval process of the warrants that are on our, our agenda. Spending authority for the city manager. We need to take a look at community engagement grants, the process and the amount of money. We also have, and I can't remember the name, Ms. Scott, the, the nonprofit, is it Ania Community Fund? Foundation? You know, if we could get a report on that and, and where the money is going, that would be good. And I would like us to revisit and receive a report from the city manager on centralizing purchasing and the grant rider. And then when Mr. Wright made a presentation during the budget, he, the Park and Recreation Department came up with some suggestions with regards to revenue generation on some of our property. I think we need to go back and revisit that and have a discussion, you know, in the future. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I had a couple, couple quick questions. Regarding the, so you're going to want a decision tonight or a recommendation on the 1.7 million? That's the salary saving carry-
We don't need a decision tonight, if you, if you do want it. It could be something that, when we begin the budget process, that you discuss at that point. Or if you want to give direction, we'll incorporate it into when we bring the budget process, but.
Okay. Well, my, my, my recommendation would be to put it back in the budget stabilization or the reserve or something like that, as opposed to spending it on a one-time project at this point. But, so we, we could, we could decide tonight, or we can wait, whatever the council's pleasure is on that. And then the, the sales tax reduction, so we, they estimated 235,000. That was the number you had on September the 28th, and here we are, like, not even a couple of months later, and we're, we're down another 750, right? So why, why do you think they, they missed it by so much? Or why, why is it such a big?
Well, one of the things, when we meet with them quarterly, one, it's always a quarter behind by the time they get the information and they're comparing to prior year. So when we've got the 235,000, they're looking at the same quarter in the prior year, and then evaluating tax returns from the different businesses as it comes in. And then unfortunately, you know, we get the day, they show us the data comparatively to the state of California, other regions. We're definitely not alone in what's happening in the economy. They, they said just overall consumer spending habits are different. Plus with everything going on, unfortunately with tariffs and everything else in the government, it's causing a lot of buyer uncertainty. They did say, and it's not guaranteed, but they've seen in other jurisdictions where a Costco has opened very close neighboring. And it's not a guarantee, but usually that they see in the first six months, sales kind of really significantly dropped within the community where it's being pulled from. But then as people get over the newness of it, and you know, different Costcos carry different things, that it kind of starts to revert back to more how it was. They're not guaranteeing or promising that, they're just get, telling us what they've seen in other jurisdictions historically. So there is hope, we can, you know, that early next year, even by the June 30th quarter next year, that sales will start to bounce back at our Costco.
Okay. Well, you can definitely go in there and shop without a line and get gas, so it hasn't bounced back there.
Well, you know, and I will tell you, I, when I've shopped at the Brentwood Costco, just me personally, it's not, it's not overcrowded there either. I've been kind of like, wait a minute, it seems almost like going in the, so I, I, I'm not sure what's going on.
Hey, Dawn, you shouldn't be shopping at the Brentwood Costco.
You should not share that with us.
You have to check it out to see what it was like, you know?
As long as you're just doing a surveillance, not shopping there. So, so just one more time, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So, so the true deficit is like 11, 11, it's not the 16.6, it's 11 something when you back out the encumbrance, encumbrance rollover, correct? Okay, so that's, that's the number that we were thinking was going to be around 15, is actually 11 now.
Correct. And when we adopted the budget, it was kind of around the 11 million, because it was 7.7 million plus 5 million from the budget stabilization that's authorized. So the number hasn't changed that much.
Okay, so it's still basically the same?
Yeah. It's a little bit lower, just because we have the salary savings, which is negating the drop a little bit of the sales tax, but we unfortunately haven't made much movement there yet, so.
But, but one of the reasons isn't it because we, we were going to use $5 billion of the restabilization?
Right, but like I said, when we adopted the, the budget, it was, the total combined was about 11 million something. 7.7 was left over from the, after taking the 5 million budget stabilization.
Okay, and then on the, can you scroll to the budget summary table, please?
Yes.
Or down, whichever direction is that one. So it's, oh, yeah, and there, under revenues, it shows fines and penalties at 27,000. What, does that include code enforcement fines?
No. That's like vehicle code fines that we get from parking or DMV fines.
Okay, so it's, it's not much.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a small, small number to have its own line item in this.
I know, it is, and I, it's just for accounting purposes, where we, like, if you look in our financial statements, we have categories we have to report by, so we try and maintain the, the same reporting to the city council, so that if you're looking in the financial statements, you can, you can make the tie between the two years.
And last question, so on, on the, the sales tax, the $1 million sales tax reduction, is that the combination of our 1% and our sales tax, is that both of them?
So the measure W sales tax actually went up a little bit slightly by like 70,000. So that, the one, so the, yeah, so the 1,021,000 number nets with the increase in measure W. And the reason for the measure W 1%, that's a destination-based tax. So for example, if you go buy a car in another city, we get that tax. If you're shopping online, we still get the half cent. So that's why those numbers, while they closely align, they're not quite equal.
And measure W sunsets in 2037?
I believe that's the date.
Okay, so that's one time money. Okay, that's, that's all the questions I have. So does council want to make a decision tonight on the one, one, and want to wait, wait until January?
I would suggest wait till January, so we have a whole, complete picture. Because we need to make adjustments, we can make it now. I don't want to do something now and then in January have to undo or do more.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the resolution appropriating the expenditures and income, for kind of occurrences and budgets?
So moved.
Second, motion is second, cast your votes.
Thank you, motion passes three to zero with council members Wilson and Mayor Protem Rocha absent.
All right, thank you. Moving on to a regular agenda item number seven, purchase of 23, 2026 replacement vehicles and six new-to-fleet 2026 vehicles utilizing cooperative purchase agreements in the amount of $2,466,000.
Thanks so much, Director Buntings, here to talk about this item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, this item is regarding a purchase of some vehicles, replacement vehicles, as well as new-to-fleet. Staff has met with department heads during the budget process earlier this year to review these vehicles and equipment inventory. This review determined which units met established replacement criteria and identified any new operational needs within each department. Based on this assessment, the current recommendations include the replacement of vehicles that have reached or exceeded their useful life and the addition of new-to-fleet vehicles that department heads have requested to meet operational needs. The list of vehicles are identified for replacement and new vehicles to fleet are shown within the staff report. Because vehicle manufacturers order banks open and close at, at their own discretion, access to multiple corporation purchasing agreements allows the city to be flexible to purchase vehicles at competitive prices utilizing a streamlined procurement process. Replacing these, replacing these vehicles is necessary to maintain a safe, reliable, and efficient fleet that supports the critical operations of the city's departments. For public works, fleet vehicles are essential for maintaining city infrastructure, responding to service requests, and completing day-to-day operational tasks and that directly affect the community. For the Police Department, reliable, reliable vehicles are critical to ensure timely response to calls for services, maintaining officer safety, and supporting ongoing public safety operations. Additionally, timely replacements reduce ongoing maintenance and repair costs associated with aging equipment, minimize the risk of unexpected breakdowns, and help lower vehicle emissions, which support the ci, the city's environmental subs- sustainability goals. Myself and staff would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this topic.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Freitas?
So I do have a couple. Mr. Bunting, when staff does a fiscal analysis and we're taking money out of a fund, could you please tell us what the balance is? Such as the Vehicle Replacement Internal Service Fund?
Yes, we will get you that information.
Okay. Just at the time, but because it is a policy question.
Understood.
It may seem like we're using it all one foul swoop, or, you know, it comes, it trickles in, there's so much variance in each fund. That's why it's not as cut and dry.
I, I understand, it's just at the time you write this, bring the computer, say, oh, we have X amount of dollars.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking, because it's a policy question for us. If we approve this, the assumption is there's still money in the fund to take care of emergencies and things of that sort, but we don't know unless you put the figure in there.
Understood. And, and, and as the city manager was saying, sometimes it seems like the little moving target on our part, but I understand the snapshot that you're looking for, I understand what you're saying.
I only get the information that they have. So, Mr. Mayor, my item is attachment B. Part of the question, you're, you're ta, you're going to finance six of these, six of these vehicles with the impact fee, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so you have attached the reports. And the reports, you know, I found fascinating on one hand and frightening on the other. And so it was prepared in February 2014. So the information contained in this report is probably 2012, 2013. So this means for 11 years, 11 years, we have not gone back to the impact fee. And when I started to go through some of these items, it gets scarier, because, you know, it, it talks about the rate of inflation, you know, the last 12 months of a 20, 20 city cost index 11 years ago. The world has changed radically, so that's no longer valid. Go through here, impact revenue cannot be used to cover the operation and maintenance costs of these and other facilities and infrastructure, and this is for capital facility- 2012, 2017. That's eight years ago. Then we look at one of the footnotes, the three percent administrative cost is designed to cover the costs of preparation, the development impact fee, and subsequent updates, as well as required reporting, auditing, collection, and other annual administrative costs involved in overseeing the program. Really? That has not been reviewed in eleven years. And so as I went through, I mean, you know, I know I'm becoming a broken record on this, but it's frightening to me. So when I get to table three, Antioch's residential development capacity estimate, and there is the item, 2003 general plan build-out. And it shows single-family, multiple-family, and total. You know, I'm curious, and when this comes back to us, did we meet these? Were we under? Were we over? Because they have dramatic impacts on the impact fee in and of itself. And unfortunately, you're standing here, and I love it when I get to page sixteen, vehicles, the demand for vehicles generated by future growth is calculated based on existing inventory requirements. The city currently needs twenty-eight vehicles. Tonight, we're at twenty-three, you know? And again, eleven years ago. And then, well, the city will have to fund service improvement for five vehicles from non-impact fees. New growth would contribute an additional demand for ten now. So again, Madam Clerk, and Madam City Manager.
Yes.
You know, I've been raising this for the past year, you know, with NPDS fees, with now the impact fees, with rates, charges, and assessments, lighting and landscaping districts, and others. We are not staying current.
No, I know. Do you see how Director Store has moved closer and closer and closer? Because he's desperately trying to answer you.
I see him. And, you know, God bless him. Because one of the things, on table six, what's the cost of a vehicle back when this report was done? The average cost of a vehicle today is fifty thousand. Unit cost seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. I think we have missed the mark. And so I just, City Manager.
Yes. Let me help you. Okay.
Please, in January, help the city, help itself.
How about we tell you what we're doing to help you now?
Sure.
He's going to tell you exactly. We hear you. We see you, sir. We see your pain. We have been trying to address it as fast as possible. And we're going to tell you how we're doing that.
Yeah. So let us bring Mr. David Store up. He'll talk a little bit more about those development impact fees.
Oh, the temporary guy.
We do a take-two around here.
So what you're experiencing, David Store, Mr. Mayor, council members, with the Community and Economic Development Department, what you're experiencing, the frustration you're having, is everywhere in California. Why? Because the AB-1600 or the Mitigation Fee Act numbers that we did in 2014 with it, with data from 2013 and maybe before, are always changing. You collect the fees as they come in. You don't get to build out within a week. And so what happens is, is you collect those fees, you have to make a decision as to when you've pulled enough money to go out and make those purchases. So static 2013, 2014, the six police cars that you have, they were pumping out at thirty-nine thousand dollars a car. Okay? And you pointed out the other vehicles, depending on which department. So let me just do a refresher very quickly. In 2014 EPS, looked at general administration, police, public works, and parks and recreation, and said, staff, tell us what you think new development will impact within this community. And then once you identify the facilities and the things that you need, whether it's space for city hall, or whether it's vehicles, or other things, then you put the price to it, and then you establish the fee for new development impact only. You don't cure the sins of the past with these new fees. So we've been collecting those fees, pooling them together until such times like this. We've been spending throughout the years. And each year, we come back with an AB-1600 report within one-hundred-and-eighty days of the end of each fiscal year. We'll be with you, in front of you on December the ninth with that report for the prior fiscal year. And what we'll be doing also is, as Council, City Manager said, we've actually contracted with EPS to go ahead and do an update of the NEXUS study to put new costs in for the vehicles, look at some fees that we're not collecting perhaps, and doing an analysis of where we are with respect to buildup. And you mentioned, Councilmember Freitas, we were at one-hundred-and-five-thousand population when the report was done in 2013, 2014. We're at one-hundred-and-seventeen if you look at DOF right now. So yes, we've not been growing quite as crazily, but we're not at buildup either. So we're somewhere between one-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, which is not buildup, and a number that the general plan will be telling us we're going to get to. Oh, and guess what? We're also updating the general plan. So we'll be making more assumptions as well. What will build into this new study that will come to us so that we can update our fees in July of next year is this new EPS study.
And I assume that we are going to take a more periodic review with regards to updates?
We're required to report every year.
So the reason why a police vehicle back then did cost thirty thousand, how much does a police vehicle today cost?
So luckily, yes, we all know the answer. It's about a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand dollars. A seventy thousand dollar difference.
Well, if you recall, there's also the cost of the vehicle plus the added or new cost to get them ready for operation. So it's not just the police cars. It's also public works, code enforcement, and other people that have cars. There's the fixed cost of the vehicle, which has increased, plus doling it up with electronics and all that other good stuff. But again, this report, the city saw that there was a need for updating this report. We began that early summer of this year to get this process started. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Does that make you a little happier, Councilmember? I just, I want to, I just, baby steps, baby steps.
Councilmember Torres Walker, did you have any questions? This is, we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comments.
All right. They were all afraid to ask any questions. I'm just here.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I have, I have one question. So through, through City Manager Scott for Mr. Bunting, could you, do you leave? Do you run off? Oh, there he is. Okay. Can I ask you a quick question on the vehicles? So we're adding one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, Mr. Cepeda, we're adding six vehicles to the utility, to the utilities?
Right.
Are those, and they're new to fleet, so we're not replacing existing vehicles? What all are those going to be used for?
It's for staff that we've added over the last three to four years. So the division, like the distribution department, has grown over the last three to four years. There's like thirty people working in that division now. So it's vehicles that they need. The water treatment plant also added some personnel with the D-SAL project. They added some instrument techs, some more maintenance workers. So they need a utility truck there also. So it's for additional staff that's been added. We were using surplus trucks in the past, but we had to get rid of them. They were just too worn out. And so we have a deficit right now on vehicles.
Okay. And so once these are added to fleet, then we'll begin an equipment replacement, vehicle replacement fund, funding for them. So when it's time to replace them again, we'll have money for us.
Yeah, these will go on a vehicle replacement.
Okay. And the only other question I have is, so there's no general fund money being used for these purchases? This is all based on vehicle replacement and the AB-1600 fees?
Yes, sir.
Is that your statement?
That's correct.
That's a true statement.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Please catch your votes.
Rocha absent.
All right. Perfect. Moving on to item number eight, mayor requested discussion item, 2025 citywide economic development initiative grant awards.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This is a mayor requested discussion item in terms of the 2025 citywide economic development initiative grant awards. The mayor asked me several times to bring this item to discussion for you all outside of the ninety-day city council request list. The total cost of the proposed grants was sixty thousand dollars, which will be funded through the economic development program budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The awardees of the request for proposals for the citywide economic development initiative include the allocation, proposed allocation of two grants in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred each, and one grant in the amount of five thousand, for a total of sixty thousand dollars in funding. This total allotted amount was already approved by the city council in the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. No additional general fund allocations required. During the economic development department budget presentation in April of 2025, there was a line item for technical assistance, for a technical assistance grant to hire a consultant to assist with the inception of a downtown association. I heard from many of you, including in news articles, that that wasn't something you all wanted staff to be doing, and that you thought that outside individuals could do that better. So staff were moving forward with drafting that technical assistance and what it should look like. And we received lots of input from the public, as well as the mayor, city council members, including business owners stating that they did not believe that such an effort would be necessary, given that the downtown Antioch Association was getting just off the ground around that time. Two, in response to council direction on June ninth, 2025, economic development staff pivoted and developed a 2025 citywide economic development grant program, requests for a proposal to support local businesses and enhance Antioch's economic development across the entire city. This was initially remembered for downtown only. The idea to break these into micro grants came from Councilwoman Torres Walker. See attachment B for more information on that. On June sixteenth, 2025, the RFP was released on the city's website and shared with organizations and on various outreach channels across our social media, the Antioch Business Collaborative, Chamber of Commerce, everywhere we could get it, we sent it out. In order to ensure that potential RFP responders understood the program and evaluation criteria, economic development staff hosted an informal session for prospective applicants on June twenty-third. Five people attended, including a few of our proposers. The RFP solicited proposals from qualified organizations, nonprofits, and business entities to implement projects that aim to achieve at least two or more of the following outcomes: increased economic activity, so that's boosting foot traffic, sales, commercial occupancy rates in arkey corridors; and business retention and expansion; providing support or services that result in business stabilization and retention, and in physical and operational growth; and entrepreneurial development, so fostering new business creation, especially among underserved populations or within underutilized areas; commercial corridor revitalization, so visibly enhancing underperforming areas such as summer sales, vacant storefront activations, facade improvements, pop-ups; job creation or workforce upskilling, generating new employment opportunities or improving job readiness among residents; and community engagement, increasing stakeholder participation, visibility of small businesses, our community pride in economic corridors. So what we're looking for here is citywide innovation, not what we have continued to do that is no longer working. What is new, what is ideal, what is best in emerging practices, and how can we get to our tagline, the opportunity lives here is activated here along our economic development corridor. For our review panel, the citywide economic development initiative review panel evaluated three final proposals, which were submitted and recommended awardees and associated financial award amounts on September ninth, 2025, based on the stated criteria that I just outlined to you all, including project feasibility, community impact, equity, and sustainability. A fourth proposal was submitted by the downtown Antioch Association, and the proposal was duplicative of the Delta Business Group application, which proposes a downtown Antioch business revitalization initiative. So that, since they were duplicate, they were encouraged to combine their efforts. They did so, submitted a single proposal, and drew their original proposal on July twenty-eighth. Members of the review panel included Councilmember Torres Walker, myself as City Manager, our then assistant City Manager, Brad Helfenberger, our interim Community and Economic Development Director, David Store, our Public Information Officer in the back, Jane Baird, our Economic Development Program Manager, Brett Sweet, and we also had our Economic Development intern fellow sit in as well. The review panel evaluated all proposals carefully under a blind review, meaning we had a portal where none of us could be together to grade the RFPs. We were all, you know, at home on our laptops, and then the information went in, and thus, program spit out the scores. It is noted that they were highly trained, obviously, and capable individuals on this RFP review panel, and that the process included this blind review and a group discussion at the end. Actually, we took several hours on this discussion, one of the most robust discussions I've been in in a while. Two, it is noted that you may think it's an anomaly that a city councilwoman was on our panel. She was on the panel because it was her idea. And she has an interest, as well as the rest of our council, to sit in in certain things. Staff often invite the city council to join on projects. You know this about me, to send in an executive-level interviews and to collaborate on special initiatives and RFP review panels, whether that is our councilmember Freitas sitting in to hire our new economic development director, or our mayor taking the final interview with our PIO candidates. We are often asking and encouraging them to collaborate and steward relationships with me, and their partnership is welcome. Actually, I take your advice, as you know, even if it's to go on a hike. And I like to cultivate and steward our relationships with the council in partnership. I welcome your various experience and your breadth of knowledge. I really do. So the funding recommendations. The total funding available for this initiative is sixty thousand dollars. Recommended by the review panel was the following distributions: Celebrate Antioch Foundation, five thousand dollars to perform Antioch farmers' market promotion and signature event promotion. Although this proposal did not align fully with the parameters of the RFP, the organization was awarded an amount due to their services being complementary to city services under community engagement such as the farmers' market. Delta Business Group, twenty-seven thousand five hundred to work with the downtown Antioch Association to build a citywide, business-centered digital infrastructure development, citywide and downtown capacity building, community building, collaboration, and transition planning. Prison from the inside out, twenty-seven five hundred to perform commercial corridor revitalization, citywide community engagement, workforce development, and job creation, and workforce upskilling. There were only ones we hit that. In September, we received emails from several applicants wondering what the process is, and gave them explanations regarding what had transpired, even within their displeasure. Of course, we've worked with people in the past and in going forward, and sometimes those shift based on our competing needs and interests as a city. So the considerations that I have are as follows. The legal review of this RFP was sent to this council several times. The city attorney's office reviewed this RFP, along with forwarded emails from the displeased party and all attachments. In short, the opinion included that there were no legal issues in the way the city manager handled this RFP. The RFP itself clearly outlines the scope of services being sought, and the amount of the award does not exceed the amount authorized under the city manager. The issues raised by the displeased party are due to more personal misunderstandings, as opposed to impropriety by myself or the city. To that end, I believe said misunderstanding may have arisen from slight variations between the presentation that was given in the informational session and the text of the RFP itself. It is important to note that the text of the RFP controls, not the presentation. However, having the text of the presentation match the RFP as closely as possible should have helped avoid this issue and will in the future. First, it seems that the displeased party believed the city was promising up to three awards of twenty thousand dollars each, which is the working slide on slide seven of the presentation. The RFP actually says up to twenty thousand. The minor change in wording is significant, actually, because it creates two different expectations. One where the possible amount is definite, and one where the amount is variable. As stated before, the text of the RFP controls, but it would have probably helped to avoid confusion, I admit, if the language in both RFP and the presentation were the same. Second, has to do with the scope of the services. The RFP had two sections that outline this, pages four and pages eight, but the pages say different things. It appears that the scope of services outlined in the presentation is taken from page eight, which would not have been a problem if the language on page four was the same. Once again, uniformity should help proposals avoid confusion in the future. In this case, it does not. It gives us something easy to point out to address their misconceptions and to address their concerns. Lastly, is the fact that two of the proposals were awarded more than twenty thousand dollars. While the RFP states that the goal was to award the groups up to twenty thousand, it is important to recognize that a total of sixty thousand was authorized for this endeavor. It is the city attorney's understanding that the award did not exceed the total amount. It is the city attorney's understanding that the awards do not exceed the total amount. Thus, it was the opinion of the city attorney that the said awards were not improper. Also noted, that prior to being selected, none of the proposals are entitled to anything, to any city funds, and every group is given the opportunity to be heard and was equally heard and assessed in determining the awards. Next, I want to bring up something that came up again tonight, city manager authority. There's actually an attachment H that shows my authority. In the following, the Antioch Municipal Code, and so that there are no misunderstandings or confusion, the city manager is the assigning body once all RFP bids are received. The city manager finds it concerning and alarming that members of the city council were requested to diminish my legal and longstanding authority to award routine contracts and grants, regardless of the value, even if it was within my assigning authority amounts, which are fifty thousand and attached in Exhibit H. At no time in the past was this authority questioned of prior city managers, including when the mayor himself was the city manager. The current city manager takes this opportunity to clarify and notes the following: I am directed by a majority vote of this council. The city council agenda is co-managed by the city manager and the mayor under the city manager form of government. Pursuant to two point two thirteen, political activities are prohibited. The city manager shall not participate in any city political activities or politics. Although this issue originates from a displeased grant award applicant who contributed to several political campaigns, the fact cannot determine or direct how operations are managed by me for this city. Threatening my job and in my capacity due to the fact that I am going to steadfastly adhere to the municipal code and all relevant applicable laws and vetted processes, to me is inappropriate, and my role does not include being dragged into political infighting. An Administrative Memorandum Number eighty-six, which is attached here too, within certain sections, the Administrative Memorandum details the procurement procedures. It states that unless exempt pursuant to Section Nine, exemptions contract over twenty five thousand and up to fifty thousand may be procured by one, requesting at least three written quotes, or two, the use of an RFP. The department head must recommend the award and city manager must approve and sign the purchase requisition. As applicable, the quotes, proposals, and statements or qualifications must be submitted to the finance with a purchase requisition and agreement signed by the vendor. The original twenty twenty five Citywide Economic Development Initiative Grant RFP total is sixty thousand dollars, yes. However, individual award amounts are less than fifty thousand and are thus within my purview and authority pursuant to discovering Administrative Memorandum. A report of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four Contra Costa County Civil Grand Jury. In June of twenty twenty-four, the City of Antioch received a grand jury report entitled Challenges Facing the City of Antioch. Within the findings, it is stated that the new city manager's success will depend in part on the mayor and the city council creating an environment that while maintaining the oversight required by city ordinance enables the city manager to operate with independence, as also mandated by city ordinances. This report dealt with some concerns regarding the former mayor and city council's involvement in operating issues that are the responsibility of the city manager. This city manager highlights this report based on facing similarly troubling experiences with regards to operational interference and routine matters that she is authorized to carry out, to include making financial decisions once funding allocations are approved within the budget as this item was, set by the city council and outlined by city ordinance, as well as in this position's job description. The actions described in this staff report reflect a departure from the governance structure mandated by the Antioch Municipal Code, as well as essential duties and functions as outlined in the city manager's job description, and they pose significant operational, legal, and ethical risks. Continuing encroachment on administrative authority undermines organizational stability and exposes the city to liability. Two, nonadherence to established protocols has caused a significant delay in the carrying out of the twenty twenty-five Citywide Economic Development Initiative Grant Awards, as we pushed for and even heard tonight that we're so in desperately need of economic development initiatives and activation across this city. Ensuring that a well-functioning government requires that both the city council and the city manager operate within their defined roles and collaborate together with a shared goal of moving the city forward. As such, I'm respectfully submitting this staff report to bring this item forward as requested, and I state again that there was no impropriety on my part in choosing who was on the review panel, nor these awards under my authority. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have five public speaker cards. Can we please have Debbie, followed by Joy, and then Tamika?
Thank you again, mayor and council and staff. Debbie Blaser, President of the DAA. I felt very fortunate to hear of an award through the DBG and to help the DAA and to coordinate with them on this award. It is very essential that we do receive the funding for the year work that we have done and the members of the DBG as well have put together incredible media and marketing that will absolutely fit the requirements of that RFP. The DAA would support and the businesses behind, and we've been very transparent in our monthly meetings about our role and the businesses having a role in this as well. So we thank the city manager for this as well, for this opportunity, and hope that the council will consider that as well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Can we please have Joy, followed by Tamika, and then Frank?
Good evening, mayor and council. Over the last decade, our small group of volunteers at Celebrate Antioch Foundation has organized over a hundred and twenty events in Rivertown, installed market lights on Second Street and G Street, agreed to be the organizing agency for the city's sesquicentennial celebration in twenty twenty-two, and last year we were instrumental in bringing a farmers market to downtown Antioch. Our work has always been about creating a thriving and vibrant and economically viable downtown that we can all be proud of. When Brett Sweet reached out to us in twenty twenty-four about an economic development idea to create a sustainable downtown business association and asked if we would participate, we were totally on board. We truly believe that it is through strong relationships and collaboration that positive change can happen. Yet here we are, a year later, with what was supposed to be an opportunity to collaborate that has been turned into a ridiculous competition. It appears at this point to just be confusion, prejudice, and purposeful exclusion. I am taken aback that this city manager in her staff report would suggest that a resident reaching out to their representative about a deep concern is somehow not allowed. As a former city councilwoman, I understand the city manager works as an employee of this council and that this council works at the pleasure of the voters of the city. You also state in your staff report that the RFP is confusing. The RFP is clear in that it states a city will award sixty thousand dollars in twenty thousand dollar grants to up to three projects. It does not say up to twenty thousand dollars, and it does not say the grants will or may be changed to fit a project application. Why would you be manipulating the intent of this RFP? You also state in your staff report that every group was given the opportunity to be heard and was equally assessed in determining awards. Yet you reached out to only two applicants to encourage them to rewrite their proposal, and it appears that they were allowed to submit their proposals after the RFP submission deadline. Why did you not give all applicants the same opportunity? You stated in your staff report that your signing authority is fifty thousand. A request for proposal for sixty thousand, no matter how you define it, does not meet that requirement. As well, in the city of Antioch and every other city, grants to community organizations are always and ultimately the purview of the city council. Lastly, it's just been deeply troubling to our organization that the city manager has gone to such egregious lengths to prevent the support of an organization that has volunteered and given so much to this community. Not once has the city manager reached out to try to learn about us or showed any support whatsoever. Why would any resident, frankly, try to even continue to work with the city of Antioch? And why should we continue to do this work when we don't seem to be supported in this service? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we please have Tamika, followed by Frank, and then Nicole?
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager, and community members. My name is Tamika Dixon, Program Facilitator from Prison From the Inside Out, standing in today on behalf of our co-director. First, I want to extend my sincere gratitude for this council and to our city manager for cultivating a process that has been both inclusive and intentional. The RFP itself clearly stated that the city council would be present throughout this process, and your involvement today models the type of transparent governance and community partnership that can truly be transformed within Antioch. Today's discussion is an important one, and I want to respectfully highlight the innovation is urgently needed in our city. Organizations like ours bring forward new strategies, creative solutions, and community-centered programming that speaks directly to nourishment, safety, and economic mobility and neighborhood pride. During the budget deliberations in June, the funds associated with RFP were approved by the council to be distributed for these very purposes. We are here tonight simply continuing the process that began months ago, a process that this council designed and adapted. I want to affirm that I am here on behalf of our organization to advocate for the RFP process to continue as awarded to deserving participants. We are prepared to begin work immediately. Our proposal focused on commercial corridor, workforce renovations, entrepreneurship, and development, public-facing events, and community activation. It is not just a program. It is the foundation of long-term change and nourishment Antioch so is deserving of. We are deeply grateful for this opportunity, and we stand ready to partner with the city to deliver high-quality, high-visual work that uplift merchants, residents, youth, and local economy. This is not only just the beginning. We are committed to ensuring this project becomes a cornerstone of Antioch's future success. Myself and our staff are available for any further questions you may have. Thank you again for your leadership, for your commitment to the community exclusiveness, and for following organizations like ourselves to bring forward new ideas and energy that can innovate the city of Antioch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we please have Frank, followed by Nicole, and then Devin?
Good evening, mayor, council members, city managers, and the community members. My name is Frank McDowell, and I stand before you both as a longtime Antioch resident and as someone who has witnessed the innovative, community-centered work of Prison From the Inside Out. First, I want to extend my appreciation to the city council and our city manager. The RFP clearly stated that council would be present in this process, and your involvement tonight reflects transparency and inclusivity, something our city has been asking for. The city manager has modeled a process that truly represents what an accountable and community-connected Antioch can look like. I am here tonight to respectfully advocate for the approval of this funding. As a resident who has lived here for many years, I have seen firsthand both the challenges of the potential of this city, and I've also witnessed what the FTIO has done, not on paper, but in our neighborhoods, passing out food, clothing, organizing. They bring innovation, real engagement. Their work uplifts small businesses, supports residents, and activates spaces that have been forgotten for too long. This is exactly the kind of work Antioch needs right now. Back in June during the budget hearing, the council approved these funds to be distributed for economic development and revitalization. The need was clear then, and it's even clear now. The item before you tonight is simple: the continuation of this commitment, turning the approved vision into action. The revised proposal submitted outlined program that is achievable, visible, and grounded in what our community has repeatedly stated wants: workforce opportunity, entrepreneurship, pathway, community activation, revitalization of our commercial corridors and creative projects that bring pride back into Antioch. I want to emphasize this FTIO is prepared, the community is ready, and this funding will make a meaningful difference tonight. I respectfully ask that this council to move this work forward by approving the funding. Antioch deserves bold, innovative action that is an achievement that aligns with the goals you set during the budget process and the needs our residents continue to express. Thank you again for your leadership and for maintaining a process that invites community voices to the table. Myself and FTIO staffs are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can we please have Nicole, followed by Devin, and then Portia?
Good evening. So like I said earlier, when I came to the earlier meeting and made a public comment, I was a little confused about the agenda because, you know, we were talking about the city manager or whatever. But I did look at the staff report. I never really do that, but I did look at it. And then when I saw it, I was like, are you kidding me? It really seemed, when I read the staff report, that the mayor, your friend Joy Motts, who has the Celebrate Antioch, like, I'm thinking in my head, oh, okay, she reached out to the mayor and was mad because she didn't get the funding that she wanted and that she thought that she was entitled to. And I was thinking, dang, Joy, you're joining the club. There are so many nonprofits out here, organizations out here, including mine. And we do not get, the city don't help us out very much. We have to spend a lot of money out of our own pockets. And I just, I didn't know if I was more frustrated and upset because of how entitled you seem to be. Like I said, I read the report, and it seemed as though the city attorney was saying there was nothing wrong with the process, what happened. So she has the authority to do it, just like you did when you were city manager and just like any other city manager has that authority. We don't always get what we want, you know? Not everybody wants to celebrate Antioch and walk and drink wine downtown when we got other organizations that's out here that are trying to do a lot of work. And I do appreciate you going outside of that box because it really is hard for small organizations and other nonprofits that come in or are trying to get a little pinch, just a little bit of the funding, and they can't get it because these other, you know? And I give you your kudos. You do a lot in the city, and I appreciate that. But I just don't know if I was more irritated by that or if I was more excited at the fact that we have this process going on. And if you don't know what I mean, I'm saying that because you just opened the door for all nonprofits that ain't getting the funding that they think that they deserve to come up to the, can I be the first on the list? To be on the agenda when we don't get what we think we deserve, which there are many people in this city that do work, like I said, out of their own pockets with the help of the community and don't get any funding from the city. So thank you very much, mayor, or whoever came up with this because I will be the first one, and I'm sure there are many others that are going to step up and say, look, we deserve more. I would rather help poor people that are on our streets downtown and feed them than have people walk down the street drinking wine. And no offense, Joy, I'm just saying. So, you know, like I said, I don't know if I'm more frustrated than happy, but it is what it is, and everybody have a good night. Take care.
Thank you. Devin, and then Portia.
I'm having deja vu. We were just here, Nicole. Good evening again, city council, community. I rise again once today because I want to speak plainly once again about what's happening tonight. Because of the community, as a community member, Devin Williams, not Commissioner Williams, I'm coming to see that our city manager, a black woman, is being held to a completely different standard than any other city manager who came before her. And that is not something we can ignore or dress up as procedure. The report makes it clear, in the penal code stated, "The city manager, once we're given the approval of the council, is the sole authority of the RFP decisions once they are issued." That is the law, it's been the law for years, and not once has the council or any previous council questioned that authority, until now. The city attorney already reviewed the entire RFP, all the emails and attachments, their findings were- Their findings were simple: there were no legal issues. The awards were done properly, within the city manager's spending authority and within the rules of every city manager has operated under. So why is there suddenly a problem now? Why is the process suddenly being dragged into the public spectacle only when the city manager exercises the same authority everyone, as everyone else? Excuse me. We can't claim this is about transparency when the law was followed. We can't say it's about accountability when the city attorney already confirmed the process was clean. At some point, we have to call it what it is: selective scrutiny. And selective scrutiny aimed at the first black woman to hold this office is not good governance. It is inequitable and harmful. The report even references the grand jury's concern about political interference in the city's operations. We are watching that same behavior repeat itself in real time, and if this council continues down this path, you are not only destabilizing the city operations, you're exposing the city to harmful and eroding public, harmful liability and eroding public trust in a way that is hard to rebuild. The community is tired of watching qualified black people be asked to prove themselves over and over again, as we've been told since we were little kids, you have to be 10 times better just to have at least a little bit of the same thing that they have. She deserves the respect, trust, and professional space to do her job that every other city manager received. So I'm asking tonight politely, stop undermining her. Stop moving the goalposts. Stop letting personal grievances disguise themselves as policy issues. Let her do her job she was hired to do, the job the municipal requires her to do. Because Antioch can say what it wants about progress while it treats its leadership like this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but was compelled because of the power and the fight that I had to watch up here for protection of self. I'm gonna be simple because I think community stood up and already said what needed to be said, but I'm also going to stand up as the founder of one of the proposed organizations and say, innovation looks like we can work together. The people that came with me, if y'all can stand up, that means that when you had an issue, you could have came to us, and that we can do your work together. Innovation looks like us coming together and no longer fighting, okay? We can do this as a community. We don't have to battle. Thank you.
Good evening, council. City manager Scott hit the ground running from the start. She is exceptional and the truest example of non-bias professionalism with her decision-making. I appreciate and trust the council's decision to hire Ms. Scott. You chose her. Please trust and respect her qualified decisions. That's what you pay her for, and that's why she's here. And I want, I'm gonna say something. The other day, I was working on a grant. From 2015 up until 2025, I have never applied for a grant. 22 events, 22, self-funded or sponsored. I would have appreciated any help, but for me, it is not about the money, it's about change. Thank you.
Bob, followed by Kimberly.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. As with Portia, I wasn't really intending to speak this evening, but I felt compelled to. We appreciate that the committee has decided to grant us a portion of the RFP, and we look forward to that opportunity to work with the city as well as the Downtown Antioch Association. I also want to stress that we are not being exclusive at all with our effort. We're proud of the tech stack that we're bringing forward and the plans that we have for the, not just for the Downtown Antioch Association, but citywide. We built it such that it can scale quite easily, and we're not exclusionary in any way with the program that we're bringing forward. In fact, we reach out to other wardies with the idea of working in a collaborative effort. So thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, council. First, I wasn't gonna speak, but then I thought, I just cannot resist asking why. Now, I know you can't speak back from the dais while I'm up here, but I'm confused. Out of all the things that Antioch needs, all the things that you ran for, you advocated for, you said the community needed, you have all these organizations out here doing the work, many of them out of pocket for years, then all of a sudden now we need to change the roadmap and the, and the destination of how to get there because, sorry, Council Member Freitas, but you have target practice going on with the city manager. So you did that from the outset of when you ran. I don't know why you're looking confused, because that is exactly what happened. It's been an article after article. You did it from the dais. She has been target for you number one since the beginning, and it's really time that you stop it. It is time that this council get a grip, look at the community, and try to get services done instead of tearing them apart. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erceline Lantner, and I'm just up here because I want to, I'm supporting Joy and what she's done, because it seems to me that everybody has, like, torn her down tonight for her standing up for Celebrate Antioch. She's not standing up for Joy Motts. She's standing up for the whole organization. So it was the whole organization that came to this conclusion. It wasn't just Joy's idea, and I just wanted, I want everybody to know that, because it seems to me like everybody that's, they're kind of like, they were like targeting Joy. And I don't think that's fair to Joy, because that's not, you know, she's not the sole person. Okay, so that's all I wanted to say.
We have no further comment cards? All right, thank you. Counsel?
I guess since I was on the panel and I did the blind scoring and went through the process with the city manager and staff, I'll say a few words. I think, like, I really enjoy having Councilmember Freitas as a sparring partner, and he my bestie, so I know we're gonna be laughing at the next meeting after I say what I have to say. But I think, like, and I know that Councilmember Freitas caught a stray in tonight's meeting, but this was really a campaign of Mayor Burnow, who drove this process to this council. I participated, people kept asking me, when is the process gonna start? When is the process gonna start? And I asked the city manager, and she was like, their staff is getting everything together because that is operations. We are not supposed to interfere in operations. And I had no expectation of participation, but when the city manager reached out, I was shocked, surprised, and I felt welcomed. I have never been invited into an operations process since being elected to this council in 2020, and this city manager has been the most transparent, the most welcoming, the most collaborative that I've experienced just in my short time on this council. There was a blind scoring process, and I scored every application based on a merit of their application and the projects that they proposed. I actually am the only panelist who actually gave Celebrate Antioch a high score, because they have been in a community and they have been doing a lot of work downtown in collaboration with the city, so they have presence. The proposal was not innovative, but I've, I really appreciated the farmer's market because the community had been talking about that for a while. And so after hours of deliberating and actually only choosing two applicants, we did not choose a third applicant, Celebrate Antioch's proposal was not going to be funded. And because I appreciated my experience at the farmer's market, I made a proposal to the city manager, through the city manager to staff, that we at least consider a small grant to support the efforts of the farmer's market, which was new and innovative to the city of Antioch. Staff deliberated and agreed with my proposal and moved forward as such. Somebody who is, is, is very wise, but, you know, I often argue with him a lot, you know, sometimes it's better to give people nothing than something, because either way you will not be appreciated for the process. And when I, when I saw Joy Motts' email come through to Brett Sweet and to the city council representing Celebrate Antioch, and it is true, Celebrate Antioch is an organization. I run a nonprofit organization, and the person you prop up to be the, to be the most visible person in your organization is who people are going to affiliate your organization with. And because Joy Motts has been seen as the leader of Celebrate Antioch, it would make sense that the community would deduce that this push was coming solely from Ms. Motts. What I will also say is that Celebrate Antioch has been deeply entrenched in the city's finances since its inception. And even when Ms. Motts was on the council, this city was still funneling money into Celebrate Antioch to support events and businesses downtown. We mentioned the sesquennial. Celebrate Antioch did not put on those events for free or volunteer. The city actually sole-sourced that work for pay to Celebrate Antioch to do in the city. But I've often heard on this council, even in previous, even under the previous mayor and the previous council structure, that we don't sole-source. We don't allow sole-sourcing. But I have seen our Parks and Recreation Department and our city put on event after event after event where it's, say, hosted by the city of Antioch and Celebrate Antioch, which means that even if the city of Antioch didn't cut a check to Celebrate Antioch to co-host those events, those events were resourced by the city with staff, time, and attention, and city resources. And so to, when I saw the emails, I thought to myself, this was a fair and impartial process. The city manager did what she could with the time she had, with the budget she had, even understaffed, including me in the process, which I'm thankful for, and even engaged with the city attorney to make sure things were above board. When I heard that the mayor was pushing to bring this process back to the council and strip the city manager of her authority, I immediately contacted Derek Cold, our acting city attorney, to find out what was going on. Was this process legal and above board? Was this within the authority of the city manager? And what could be the potential next steps? Well, I was informed that Mayor Burnow would like to entertain a resolution to actually strip the city manager of some of her power. Now, I was saying that we as a council should not be pushing to strip the city manager of any of her authority in this current position, he or she. But I would like to remind us that under the former mayor and the former city council, when we had a discussion about stripping a power or authority away from the city manager, the entire city and city overs were outraged. Assembly members were calling, congress members were calling, meetings in the NAACP, which, not the current president, Kim, we appreciate you, but other members were calling and saying, this is an outrage. You cannot strip the city manager of, of the city manager's authority and give it to the council, because that would not be right. But we're actively seeing this process play out, and this is my second time seeing this on this, at this dais since, since I've been here. I guess it's either something or nothing, but I don't think we can make anybody happy. Somebody is always not gonna be happy. When I read the emails, I thought to myself, wow, this is, like, the level of entitlement was staggering, deeply staggering, as if this city has not partnered with Celebrate Antioch, as if this city has not sole-sourced with Celebrate Antioch, as if this city has not put time, attention, staff time, and resources into partnering with Celebrate Antioch over the years. And because we know this, I was a little offended, and I'm new here. I did not come to this process to be biased. When I won the recount with four votes and met with Joy Motts in the hallway, I actually did say, I would like you to reach out to me, we should work together, because I want us to for downtown, and she never picked up the phone. And Debbie, however, reached out and made me feel comfortable and welcomed into the processes of downtown. Councilmember Freitas has stated that he wants to establish the standing committee for downtown, which I've been appointed to for the past five years, and never had one meeting. I wonder why that is. It's not because I don't care. It's because the moment that this, that I was put in this seat, people felt like I didn't belong, and so they walked away from the table. I will not be bullied in this process, not in the way that I've watched the city manager be bullied. I myself have written a letter to HR as well as acting city attorney Derek Cold with my observations on how the city manager has been treated, the hostile work environment, the threats and the attacks, and requested an investigation. I think that Councilmember Freitas might have some thoughts around how we can get through this, and I would love to sit with the city manager and Councilmember Freitas to deliberate, since it seems that he is the only person up here right now who's, who has not been involved, and might have some great thoughts. I will not be bullied. I think that we should allow this process to move forward as is. I do appreciate the work of Celebrate Antioch. I really would like the grants to move forward, and then maybe we could talk about a future process that doesn't involve stripping the city manager of her authority. And because I won't be bullied into voting tonight, I am abruptly excusing myself from
Mr. City Attorney, will you please address the...
Yeah, we have no quorum, so we cannot take any further action on this or any other item.
So, meeting adjourned?
I would, I would, well, I, we have a public comment section. We can have public comment and, two, two things. There is a, I don't want to deprive anyone of a right to speak, but there is, there is the 90-day item, that's your next item. If anyone wants to speak on that, they should be allowed to speak, recognizing we don't have a quorum that can do anything. And then we do have the public comments at the end, so we can't deprive people of the right to speak during the general public comment that we provide at the end. The caveat to anyone who wishes to speak is you're only talking to two council members. But if you wish to speak, we have to give them that right.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what I would suggest is item A, we cannot move forward. I would, let's ask the city clerk to call item nine, not call it, but just ask if there's anyone who wants to speak on item nine.
We have no comment cards for item nine.
Okay. So because no one in the public has requested, oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
On item nine, sir?
No, public comment.
Okay, all right. So then, Mr. Mayor, let's call General So then, Mr. Mayor, let's call general public comment.
All right. Moving on to public comments. Thank you. Can we please have Walter, followed by Angela, and then Lee?
Good day, everybody. I thank all your staff members and everybody here who's trying to help, behalf of all these teams right here, and the core also. And you, you do a great job, and, sorry, I'm a little choked up, because it's moving that we have all these people that care about us. I'm on the homeless side. I try the best to keep everything as adamant as it can be, not disturbing any of the officers or giving them any problems, because they do a good department, you know, they are a good department. I just think about how it would help us most if you guys granted us a little more assistance than trying to go around or try to, how do you say, distinguish a problem. I'm not good on distinguishing problems, because I have my own too, and we all have our own, and we also need people like be here to help us with my problems. And I appreciate them very much. Even the police department, they helped me out too, from the times that I've gone through something. So you guys are doing a good job, but a little more emphasis on the ones that are down in the dirt, you would say. Because if you guys were in my shoes, I'd buy one every week. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Can we please have Angela, followed by Lee, and then Alicia?
Good evening. What we have left over. I am Code Enforcement Officer Sequoia Taylor. I deal with these guys that are here now. What I will say, again, very grateful for you. You give me empowerment, me and the core team, I got the core team here too. I'm very proud to be here and speak and support on your behalf. We are all glad to be here. You deserve your powers to remain as they are and to continue pushing the city of Antioch forward. I'm gonna leave it at that. Everybody have a good night.
Is Angela here? Negative, okay. Lee? Oh, that was you, okay, sorry. Alicia?
Good evening. I normally don't stand up here, because it seems like every time I do stand up here and say something, it's in contracussed the news the next following morning. I've been part of their news story for the last few weeks, but I am standing here tonight because I am tired of watching our city manager, watching her be bullied. I want to be careful in what I say, but our city manager, she came on board in September of 2024. She has done a successful job. I believe she has met all of the requirements. I do know that she is probably one of the best city managers we have ever had. She came in a situation where many of our community members were traumatized. She came in a situation where the city of Antioch has yet to acknowledge the trauma that many of our community members have gone through. She came in a situation where people targeted her, but she's still here. So I was offended earlier today when I saw on YouTube that there was a special council meeting regarding a employee performance evaluation. Employee performance evaluation. And to sit there on tonight and to hear false accusations that she was being prejudiced during the decision process of a RFP really, really aggravated me, because I don't think she has one prejudice bone in her body. She's here to do a job, and she's doing it well. So the question I have is, what is the reason behind another employee performance evaluation? What is the reason? Is it necessary? I don't think so. Thank you.
We have no further comment cards? All right, thank you. With that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Motion is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned at 9:52 PM. Thank you.